All right, so if everybody can clap and see who we're gonna get started. All right, wow, what a great turnout. I just wanted to thank everybody for coming, especially the mayor, the councilors, everybody that helped all the occupiers, that helped organize this forum. It's been a long planning session, and so it's really great to see all of you come out on a really nice night especially. So, thank you for all coming and participating. Just wanted to make sure we have a raffle that we'll be announcing at the end of the evening from Equal Exchange. We've got some fair trade coffee and chocolate, so you have to stay to the end of the meeting to get the cards. If you haven't already, we have a ticket that you can sign up. So, I just wanted to say that this meeting was a result of a mic check that happened in February of the city council meeting, and it's a way for us to also model some different ways of participation and civic engagement. And so, the model that we'll be using today for our agenda is actually a model that's been used in the Western Mass GA. And so, what we're going to do is we're gonna break up into small breakout groups. We have five breakout groups, and each group has a facilitator, and you'll get a chance to elect a spoke in your group, and that person will report back at the end of the meeting about what happened in your group. And so, you'll get a chance to be a part of that. And with that, I just wanted to go over some of the hand signals to make sure that everybody knows what they are. And so, we'll start out by doing this. And does anybody know where this comes from?
Basketball.
Basketball. This is actually sign language for applause. And so, it's a way also when you're in a really deep discussion and things are moving really quickly, that people can show how they're feeling without stopping the meeting. So, when you're in a really intense discussion, you can just do this. It's called a temperature check, to just gauge with the group of how things are going. So, that's one. Another thing, if you have something to say, you just raise your finger like this, and that means that you're gonna be on stack. And stack is just a way to keep track of who's speaking in the meeting. So, in your small groups, if you have something to say, hold up your finger, and the stacker will write your name down. Also, if somebody is talking a lot, and it's kind of want them to move on, we've got a very polite symbol, and it's just, this means wrap it up.
Traveling.
Keep going. Also, if you can't hear, if you're having trouble hearing, this is, you can do this. And what do we use in Occupy North Hampton? There's another symbol.
Ears.
Ears. So, if you can't hear, you can just do this, and that means speak up. Anything else that is important?
Down.
Okay, so this also, if, we can do a temperature check, and this is also, yes, I like what's happening. This is, oh, it's okay, and this is, this means I don't really like what's going on. So, that's a, when somebody says a temperature check, that's what they're, that's how we gauge the crowd. So, great. We also have some, I'll just kind of go over this briefly. So, we're going through the guidelines next, and then we're gonna get into pairs, and we'll do an introductory exercise. We'll save the introductions for the small groups for everybody. And after that, we're gonna get into the five breakout groups. So, we've got corporate accountability, public space, economic development, civil liberties, and civic engagement. And so, when we get to that section, people will talk about what those topics actually mean. And then, once we're done with the small group discussions, we're gonna get back into this group, and we'll have report backs on what each group discussed. And then, we'll save some time, about 15 minutes at the end. There's a lot going on in the next few weeks with the Occupy movement. We've got a bunch of announcements to announce at the end. And so, just a reminder that we have to be out of here by nine o'clock, so the janitorial staff can keep note. So, we're gonna keep it right at nine. So, we'll be out of here by nine o'clock. So, Wendy, you're gonna help with the guidelines?
Yes. So, hi, everybody, my name is Javier, and I'm helping out with facilitation this evening. And we wanted to just establish some group guidelines for how we're gonna interact tonight. We're gonna be talking about some issues that folks may have some disagreements about. There might be a lot, some feelings that come up, and we just wanna make sure that we have an agreement about how we wanna engage with each other. So, I'm sure all of you have been in meetings, or in classrooms, or in various group experiences where there have been guidelines that have been really helpful in making things go well. And I'm just wondering if folks wanna shout out a couple of guidelines that you wanna propose for this evening?
One speaker at a time.
Anything else?
Speak for yourself, don't speak for other people.
Uh huh. So, what's another way of saying something like that?
I.
Make I statements?
And I come from a human resource development and empathic responses, so I believe in new statements. People should respond to what people said and what they're feeling if possible. So, you could call it responses.
Responses.
Responding to what people said.
Uh huh. And do you mean like literally responding?
Literally responding.
Like just nod your head?
No, literally responding. Eighty-five percent of productivity is dependent upon that flow of information.
Uh huh.
And when it happens, when it takes off, is when you respond to somebody else, to what they said. Most importantly, their feeling, which is almost impossible for people, but I'll put it out there anyway.
Okay.
Respect.
Respect. Can you say something about what that looks like, or?
That looks like understanding that whoever is speaking, you can, you hold respect for their opinion, and likewise, they will hold respect for your opinion.
Anything else?
Yeah, we speak up so people can hear us.
And there's one called step up, step back, and that just means if you have a tendency to speak a lot, to just take a step back, and if you're shyer in groups, that you actually step up a little bit and let your voice be heard.
I think, you know, the attitude of curiosity, I mean, this is a, this is really a first, as far as I can tell. And so, being curious about what's going to emerge and what people's ideas are. And the other thing is just this acronym that General Assalis and others, I find really useful, and it's a little ironic perhaps, the acronym is WAIT, W-A-I-T, and it stands for why am I talking?
So, promoting kind of an attitude of curiosity, but then also being aware or thoughtful about why you're speaking and what it, you know, why you're taking up airtime or space. Anything else?
Combination of get to the point and be brief.
Uh huh. So, that's sort of connected to the WAIT acronym, right? And step up, step back, if that makes sense. Any other guidelines that people wanna propose for the group?
I think listening ought to be included here.
Uh huh.
I know it's kind of obvious, but doesn't hurt.
Okay.
Number one.
Are there dialogues use active listening to emphasize how?
That's what the response is.
Yep. Yeah, I put down here, active listening.
Cool.
I wanna throw out there one, which is agree to disagree. We're not necessarily here to convince people of our point of view. We're really here to listen and share, and there may be times where we need to agree to disagree, and that's okay. So, that doesn't mean that we've done something wrong or we've failed, so. Great. So, just temperature check. If this sounds good to you, up. If you're kind of like eh, and if you're like not happy, so it seems like we're good, great. And in small groups, if folks come up with other guidelines that you wanna use in your small groups, that's totally fine too, but these are the place to start. Great. So, now, we're gonna just take some time to get to know one person in the room and do a little mini icebreaker. So, I want folks to turn to somebody next to you who you don't know very well. Find a partner. Take turns, us being in listening, and each person in the group is gonna get two minutes. And when it's your turn to speak, you get to just respond to the questions that I'm gonna pose to you, and your partner is gonna be listening actively. And what that means is that you're really just gonna be listening. You're not gonna be chiming in, you're not gonna be asking questions, you're just gonna be giving your partner your full attention and listening to what they have to say. And then, at the end of two minutes, we'll switch. And what I'd like you to do is tell your partner your name, and why you're here, and what you hope to get out of tonight. So, each person will get two minutes to talk about that, and then we'll switch. Does that seem clear, everybody? Great. So, just agree who's, I'll tell you when to switch, and agree who's gonna go first, and we'll start. Go ahead. So, before we, we hear about the small groups that we're gonna be getting into shortly, I'm just interested in hearing from two or three people really briefly, just a little something about what you heard, or what came up for you in your pairs, just from one or two people. We can't hear from many, because we wanna get on with it, but.
Well, I think, I'd like to get to me, because my person's Frances Crowe, and I think she said some things that are really important for people to hear about why she's here, and that she's given up on national change as being very possible, and thinks that the best potential for change is local, and so that we should be here talking to each other, and that she's really known for her stand against war, but one of the biggest causes of war is our lifestyle, which we can work towards changing, and we can help each other do that.
I wanna hear from maybe one or two other people.
I love it because my partner here, Howard Moore, is a member of the school community, and he wanted to come here to, you know, tell me about the Occupy movement. He wanted to know, come here to see whether he could find a different way or a new way to connect or make more important his role in school community.
Great.
Great.
My partner Wendy kind of just says, it's all so ugly, overwhelming, and frightening.
Yeah.
I need to find a way to begin.
Thank you, thank you. We're gonna move on, just because our time together this evening is short, but thank you all for sharing.
Pass it to you, sharing small groups. All right, so, we know that there's a lot that we could all talk about tonight, and hopefully, there'll be more than this forum to talk about and plan for our future, but we keyed out a couple areas for our discussion groups, and we'll have a member from Occupy North Hampton describe what these groups will be talking about. So, we're gonna get into these small groups, and there's going to be a facilitator that will guide you through a series of questions in these small groups. So, the first one is public space.
I'll put someone else first.
Okay. Economic development.
My group is just gonna be discussing economic development in North Hampton, what we think is working in North Hampton, what isn't working in North Hampton. Some of the larger corporations that are recently in town, they posed some issues to the town, and so, maybe that could be discussed.
Civil liberties.
We're gonna talk about the implications locally of the new laws that have been passed on restrict, that seem to be restricting our civil liberties and perhaps the constitution or the Bill of Rights.
Public space?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about why, how we might be able to get more non-contractual, I'm thinking, public space. There's really a hard time finding free public space for people to more spontaneously get together and do all kinds of things. I know as an artist, I didn't get the space I needed, and it's too late for me, but maybe I can help others.
And then, we've got corporate accountability?
And financing, right?
And financing? I can say briefly what that's gonna be about. Did you wanna speak to it? No, go ahead.
Well, essentially, we wanna talk about the corporations in this city, and what we're getting from them, and what we're giving to them, and trying to help that work out in a better way than some of us feel it is now.
And then, the last group will be public participation and civic engagement. Do you wanna say something about that? Wendy? I'll have to put you in first.
I'm doing public space.
Okay. So, I'll just say briefly, so we're gonna talk about getting more participation, and like, why do people participate, why do they not participate, thinking about the best practices committee and some of the recommendations that came up during that and furthering that discussion, so there'll be a whole breakout group on that. And so, we'll spend about 45 minutes. Is there questions?
I have a question back to the corporate accountability versus economic development. They sounded like overlap.
They do, there is some overlap there, yes.
Okay. So, in both groups, there's gonna be discussion of what our corporations are doing, and what can be fixed, and what's wrong.
Could you speak up, please?
Oh, okay. Go ahead. I was just, I was just asking for some clarification around the corporate accountability group versus the economic development, since both of them raised the issue of our corporations and how they're corporate citizens in our community. Yeah. We thought that that would be a big group, so we divided it into, and one of the financing, there's also, people are talking about divesting from corporate banks, so that will be another big conversation in the financing group. So, how can we divest like other cities like Berkeley and Austin, Texas, absurdly to do?
Can I, can I offer another distinction that might be helpful?
Sure.
If, in the corporate accountability, a lot of people who are feeling criticism of the behavior of corporations in town, I would think would be attracted by that title, economic development might be also looking at how do we grapple with economically developing the town and needing something to come in and throw off income. I mean, often, when I get in discussions with people in small towns about the problems of corporations, the question, like when we had demonstrations, and we got Nestle to go away and not build a bottling plant using conservation water, the question then was, all those little towns up there were hoping for the employment, Turner's Falls, and Montague, and so forth. So, there's two sides of the coin with, you know, I'm not, you can be really angry and critical, doesn't mean you want a corporation there, but the question is, is there a way that we can sustainably do economic development and keep our values? I think that's a huge challenge, and maybe that's where the other one goes.
Okay. So, we're gonna have each, can we get the facilitators to come in in the center? So, we've got a facilitator for each group. Facilitator, and then there's a person that's gonna be helping them. So, will you say what you're doing?
I'm gonna be facilitating the civil liberties group, and I propose that folks, yeah, do we want to get a show of hands of who's interested in each group, just to get a sense of like how evenly divided we are?
Great.
So, who's interested in being in the civil liberties group?
Great. Okay, so that's that.
Behind you was a hand.
Great. And Wendy, public space? Okay, if you're interested in talking about public space, raise your hand.
And this includes public meeting space.
Public meeting space.
Yes.
So, we've got, okay, we've got a handful, great. And Luke?
I'm doing economic development.
Economic development, if you're interested in that group, raise your hand. Okay, and Allison?
I'm doing the corporate accountability and financing here.
Corporate accountability and financing, raise your hand. Okay. And Barbara?
Doing civic engagement and participation.
So, it seems like we've got at least a few people in each group, so that's great.
And so, what we're gonna do is you're gonna, we're gonna stay in this room, but we're gonna cluster, so you're gonna take your chair and kind of move, so each of the facilities can kind of find a corner right now. And I just, one other, just thing, I know there's a lot of, there's a handful of elected officials in the room, and people who work in the city, and we'd love for you all to do is, you can just sort of spread out, and spread out amongst the group, so just maybe notice who among your cohort is where, and if there isn't somebody in a group, maybe go in that way. I'm gonna keep an eye on the time.
You're gonna give us like a 10 minute?
I'll give you warnings. Yep. We're gonna do that in the small group. All right, so go ahead, find your group, and we're gonna take the next 25 minutes of this. Corporate accountability?
Another green.
Corporate accountability? Yeah. I represent neither, I'm just facility. Corporate accountability and financing is over here. Yeah, if you guys could just grab your own chairs, and try to make a circle, sort of a smaller version.
Hi. I got my second phone.
Which one?
Yep, excuse me.
Yep, yeah. So, we're gonna get really close, as close as we can without. So, before we get started, we need a couple volunteers here.
We got your mark, fine.
Civil liberties?
Oh, one on one, okay. Sorry.
So, somebody can leave one of us. Either way. Okay, so let's do a very brief introduction to say your names and why you're here, and I don't know. Let's try, and then say what's on the list.
Hello. I'm just here to give this to somebody, because one of your first tasks would be to figure out who's gonna take notes for when we all come back together again in the forecast.
So, again, I'm Barbara. I'm here because I'm concerned about the state of our nation and our world, and I'm having a major group. I've got a little bit of a future, and what happened years from now.
My name's Adam. I've been interested in civic engagement and best practices in North Hampton. Your yours?
I'm Bill Dwight. I'm a member of the city council. The reason I'm here is actually, I'm very excited to prospect actually a conversation with a pretty short term.
So, is anyone interested in?
I know we have this piece of crap.
And if someone can volunteer to stacker, you're writing names down. Do you have a paper? So, before I ask the Occupy person to sort us out about what we're gonna be talking about, what it means, the different goals, can we just go around with their names, maybe? One word about what brought us here tonight, or how we're feeling right now. So, I'm Allison. Oh, would you like to join?
I'm a reporter, I'm flying the wall.
Okay. So, my name's Allison, and I'm excited to be here. Daryl?
My name's Rich. I'm a little stiff.
I'm Bill Ames, and I'm a final speaker around here with the Occupy.
My name's David Entin. I live in Rocky Hill Co-Housing, and I'm chair of the peace and justice committee of First Church. My name is Buzz. I live in the, not officially working for Williamsburg, I absolutely didn't post.
My name is Warren. Part of the reason I'm here, I saw the video of the Occupy.
Part of the result of seeing that was that the bombing forces with Occupy moved as I saw.
I'm Pocky, and I live in Ward Two, and just every time I open my email from certain sectors, I read about another bill that's being enforced, that's holding us hostage. I mean, before we wake up and say, oh my God, we have no liberties, let's wake up and say, how do we fight that?
That makes sense.
My name is Sue Jones. I live in Florence, and I work for, it's interesting to hear, you know, the words that come from, that's not usually the way we think of ourselves, and I just, civil liberties are so fundamental.
My name is Susan Norley. I'm from Bay State Section of Florence, in Port Lyne. And I feel that civil liberties, it seems like they're being struck down, one after another.
I've attended a meeting.
My name is John. I live in Florence. The actual corporate.
To hear some of the stories of the people who run up against.
It affects us both.
Their civil liberties.
And after, my time to last two or three years. It's interesting, falling out of both parts. I've wound up having to pay off a mortgage. Strategize myself, and I'm sure for many of you.
Seeing the next possible step.
I'm GPC, representative of Orange Seven, North City Council.
I'm here to listen to some of these people.
Hi, I'm City Councilor Marcy Allen Marge, and I'm also here tonight. So, when the group have come to our city council meeting, I was in understanding that Stan's latest meeting, and I think it's going to happen.
My name is Zach Ender.
The latterly.
My name is Asher. I was actually too much politics, because it's a recent history, and I'd like to get more of an involvement.
I work at the Haymarket Cafe, and I'm an intern at the Media Association Foundation, and I was really inspired by the Occupy Festival that we had in North Hampton. I'm this one from New York, and so I was just interested in.
So, we're just in this first go around, that we really need to speak out and project in order to hear each other in this room, there's so much else going on, so I just wanna remind everybody to just speak up and project, so that the person across from you can hear it.
So, we wanted to start the conversation by asking, what in your experience has worked well, or is working well?
I attended a meeting.
My name is John. I live in Florence. The actual.
Hear some of the stories of people who run up against.
It affects us both.
Their civil liberties.
And after.
Getting in and out of the country.
As consumed by my time for the last two, three years. Interesting following up with both. I've wound up having to pay off a mortgage. Strategize myself and I'm sure for many of you.
Seeing the next possible step.
I'm GPC representative of Orange Seven. I'm here.
Hi, I'm city councilor Marcy Allen Marge and I'm also here tonight. So when the group have come to our city council meeting, I was understanding that Dan's place came meeting and I think it was important.
My name is Asher. I was actually too involved in politics because it's a recent administration. I'd like to get more of an involvement.
I work at the Haymarket Cafe and I'm an intern at the Media Association Foundation. And I was really inspired by the Occupy Festival that we had in our town. I'm this one from New York and so I was just interested in.
So we're just in this first go around that we really need to speak up and project in order to hear each other in this room. There's so much else going on. So I just want to remind everybody to just speak up and project. So that the person across from you can hear. So we wanted to start the conversation by asking what in your experience has worked well or is working well with regards to the issue of civil liberties in our community.
So.
I don't know how hard that's going to be for folks. But we wanted to really start with what is working before we go into what is not working. So I just want folks to remember moment to think about what is working either one year or another. What do you know about that you feel like you want to look up?
I think it's worked well.
A biopic.
Highlight.
Important thing that you also see as far as.
To be a personal experience.
Action. This kind of meeting is one that.
Community effort that you're making is actually moving things in the right direction.
I'm sorry, I'm a city councilor.
Did you fall a long way?
I teach a movement and I have had a really hard time finding outdoor space that is okay to move around in. And I also went for Smith College and managed some spaces there and am aware of from the kind of internal issues that surround.
I remember coming in and asking about what is working. You were just pretty confident. And also.
I remember just looking for. So the learners.
I've been involved in the. Well, since the beginning of September seventeen, six months ago. I haven't been involved recently because I'm, I'm finally employed and yeah, but not so yet because it's incredibly distracting. The life and work keeps us away from these really important issues.
Great. Thank you.
I'm Carolyn Oppenheim. I've lived in the valley for ten years and I'm in for six of them. I live in Florence in Pathways Cohousing. I'm a longtime social activist and many of my. This may be a way to get, another way to get connected with making change and working for the betterment of this area.
My name is Luke. I'm involved in the Land and Corp.
So my name is Luke. I'm here a couple of years ago from San Francisco where I was very involved in activism there. I have a fellow here. I was asked to come help out with facilitation at my.
I've been up in the valley. Dan Kinsey, about twelve years, but when I was a kid, I was very busy. And I love any sort of, of a sign of. I'm a little bit of a, somebody who takes it in and just thinks about it a lot. There's a lot that's happening inside, so I'd come outside. Be willing to.
I'm Jordan. I've lived in Northampton.
We're doing a press meeting. I've been active in a few different areas. The city is a total movement here. I'm one of Northampton's two.
That keeps us going, but it doesn't seem that good. It's been to the hospital bill. We originally bought it in mixed use development into the hospital bill. We ended up giving it to Paul Morgan because there didn't seem to be any other alternative. Their Paul Morgan has been bought by Health Re Communications, one of the largest defense contractors in the country. It's one of the top three. So he's given a big slice of land and a bunch of, a bunch of good things to this huge defense contract. I'm not really happy with that, but I don't know what could have been done differently.
So I guess I was just going to address the Morgan Stanley piece because I heard, heard that mentioned a lot. I know people sue what the city called up Morgan Stanley and said they can't buy their debt. So what happens is all cities, we do, we borrow money to build things, to build roads, to buy trucks. In this case, it was to build a police station, to buy some trucks, it was to actually buy cafeteria equipment for this school and other schools. And we bundle that all together and what we're allowed to do is we then turn it over basically to a financial company that then puts it out on the open bond market. So it's sold on the open bond market. Essentially, people bid on it. It's open to any bank and Florence Savings Bank can bid on it, anybody can bid on it. In this case, because of the size of it, it came down to, you know, larger banks that bid on and purchased the bonds through this bond. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that. Northampton wasn't selecting, they were placing, was going to buy the bonds per se. Other than we turn it over to a bond agent, they go out to the open bond market and sell it. In fact, most of our money, most of our money is in local banks, but we don't bank with any, we don't bank with Bank of America. Majority of our money is in Florence Savings Bank, East Hampton Savings Bank, and People's Bank, which is based in Portland, as she says. So to the extent that we do deal with larger banks, it's actually because we're dealing with large financial transactions like.
Would it be possible, is that the financing was bundled into a large, so would it have been possible to break that down into smaller, smaller loans that could have possibly been bid by smaller banks?
It actually, I signed, I signed the bonds and it actually was broken down into like twenty individual bonds. It was actually, I think I signed it to my own bond, but I had to sign like ten of these bonds. Essentially, I think that it can definitely, they do break it down into smaller bonds and actually there's different parts of it. So for example, some of that twenty million was for trucks and those weren't bonded for twenty years, they were only bonded for five years. So the whole bundle was actually several smaller bonds all into one. And we do have some short-term bonds that we sell, which are smaller and actually local banks do. Like People's Bank bid on some of our short-term smaller bonds. I think it's just, it comes to mind. So I guess what I'm saying is part of this is sort of the economy of scale of the larger financial system that Northampton doesn't have a lot of. But to the extent that most of our money that we deal with on a day-to-day basis, what we pay employees with is all going through local banks. We actually have made a point of not investing in any of the banks that have been involved in the mortgage crisis, in the state of the trade. You just spent it all.
Say, I see this as a very. Let's try to say. I see this because we're a destination in a way. Tourism and there's a lot of kind of shops. There's a special interest among the downtown business improvement. It seemed to me that it's required a constant vigilance to refrain from those types of legislation that would restrict. The most recent one was a couple of years ago when there was, you know, forward legislation that was called anti-soliciting, but really it was about, you know, not, not allowing handing in, per se, on the streets. And so, you know, just on its basis, to me, that was a strong relation of civil liberties, but you know, it, it's a real tension that continues to exist. And I think it's a, it's a challenge for us in cities. It's a good one for us to work with though. It's good because it's local and, and it's an emotional issue to, and it's one that, you know, does really speak to that fundamental right. Ask, ask the money.
And to that, I would add that the homeless in Northampton are being basically disappeared, okay? And people don't have a right to just be there, run down the street or whatever they're going to do, okay? They're being shuffled out. Anyone who tries to live in the woods, you guys do whip around, they're shuffled out. A lot of people end up leaving the state because of that, okay?
Are they criminalized?
No, well, yes, they're criminalized.
Arrested?
Yeah. Jail. Have any. That's.
Interstate. But I think there's kind of been a debate about. Think about the inner city. Way in general, doing economic. Urban area, let me put it down. A lot, you know, usually a small town will have problems, is all I'm trying to say. I'll make three comments. Question if I may.
Sure, and I just want to remind people, raise your hand when you want to speak so that we can take a stack. If you're, if you want to get on stack, raise your hand and there hasn't been much, so I just, just want to remind people so that we don't get into, I don't like talking over each other and.
How many comments? One relative to the local communities. Had some interaction recently with a nonprofit organization called Bridge, which is trying to bridge the racial differences within a virtue pending area. And I've become aware that prejudice and racial profiling is very much alive in the community, in the school system, and in the piece of pressure. Pointeau on a personal basis, I was very active during the last twenty years of Judge Wish and Dick Cheney upset me no end. And I wrote a letter to Judge Elliot Wish. I never knew that my home is stacked and I was tailed by the FBI as I did some works of things like going yoga. It was an attempt to intimidate because I'm very active, and I have a high profile because I'm a high. Third thing. Comes together and volunteer, you say, hey, you know, some, some of the older people might say, I need some help down with my house or something like that. You go spend the day helping them out, call it volunteer day, citizens day. I mean, we have Columbus Day, it's a holiday for what? How come elections got pushed back to being nothing? You kind of vote, you know, something that should be the most important thing, we've kind of relegated it to an afterthought. I think it should be the main thing. Let's have a whole weekend of just like, you know, pressures off, my uncle's off, my uncle always said like, I think the whole world just needs a day off. They used to be blue laws, you didn't do nothing and now it's hectic rush, go. I don't see my neighbor, I don't talk to my neighbors. I think that goes a long ways to, to, I think that would be a great idea. I just believe the old people can talk about, teach the young kids in the town what it used to be like and maybe they have the historical society to talk and like, and then as an election, it's non-binding, but instead of having a poll where you ask people, what do you think about this, what do you think about that? Here's a pie chart. Everybody here, you decide where you think the money should go for everything. Now they have like, we suggest you spend this much on this and this much on that. Unofficial and unbinding, why don't you just ask people which one, where you want your money to go? And then they compare it, like this is what they actually did, this is what the people said. I think that's something that could happen, you know?
Adam is next.
I had a specific suggestion. I'd like to see the city in recent months has introduced a Twitter feed, Northampton AM, which is good and I'd like to see it expanded so that every committee board has its own Twitter feed. And so if there's information about, you know, meetings coming up, meetings canceled, put up minutes, some presentation, I think that'd be very useful, sort of a basic, keep the citizens informed and engaged. A specific problem that's arisen several times is meetings will be canceled on the same day it's supposed to take place. And so if you're not a committee member, you're likely to show up to an empty meeting in the neighborhood and that's happening. So I do hope that that can be considered.
Howard is next.
I'm trying to respond. The response to what you were saying was addition to the, in this, we're talking about this, trying to institutionalize it because it was just about people emailing you, people I run into at my kids' events. It's not fair. People don't talk to me in a formal sort of way as, there's no formal setting for people to talk about this. It either happens at my kids' events, people bump into me, or people send me emails or things like that. And I was going to say that the other things, the other way that people connect, Jared has done some of those things, she started a couple of really influential institutions in Northampton. Make sure I get this right, Habitat for Humanity and the Survival Center. Okay, so she started two things because she saw a need and started them. So that's one way outside of the government realm to engage in the community. And there are a lot of these other sort of, I don't know what you'd call them, NGOs in town, neighborhood associations, the Board Three Neighborhood Associations. Almost all the schools have some sort of community group, all sorts of different sorts, ranging from their school councils, which is an elected thing, to their monthly meetings with the principal, which is just a community thing where you can go and find out what's going on in the school and talk to people. And on and on like that, there's tons of these sorts of places that are not talking to a city council or talking to this school committee person, but which are talking to people either who have sort of, some sort of an interest affinity group in one way or another, and they all overlap. So that was one thing in terms of where are the access points? Those are the closest thing, those sort of neighborhood associations and things are the closest things to being a formalized way to sort of connect from just being people talking to the government. It was the closest thing we have, but there's sort of, there's still sort of a missing link in there. All things like the NEF and NCTV and, you know, there's tons and tons of these things that are sort of, but they all tend to be kind of compartmentalized and again, that's the, that's the challenge as far as I see it, is how to connect all these great little affinity groups in a way that's useful and not just, not too much just like going to a barbecue, in other words, have it be a little bit focused so that it actually can be productive, but not so focused as to be back to where we started. And then your two things, my response to yours is really the, it's very similar actually, it's the flip sides of the coin. I'm a big process guy because I think when you don't know the answer, which I don't think any of us do know the answer to all these questions that are being asked. I mean, we know the specific answer, you know, post the meeting changes, but when we're talking about the bigger, slightly bigger questions.
Just a little bit current then. By digging through the DBW records, I found out that Coca-Cola takes 117 million gallons per year in its reservoir and that was in 2008 before the facility expanded. To me, that's, that's a lot of water. In India, they create, when they set up similar plants, they drain.
It's over specialization. We've talked about how specialized, how particular community in Northampton is.
But I would just like to.
Our culture is very.
To get into all of this.
Particularly well-educated or at least.
Sustainable companies that really are invested in.
That keeps us going, but it doesn't work.
That could just pick up and leave whenever they feel like it.
Is that, this is New York.
Where old Northampton. People in the town become invested in these companies and they stay here.
Was a fairly self-in-class, so much.
Taking myself on the stack. This has been a great discussion. We do have to nominate a spoke, someone who's going to report back to the larger group what happened here. We have about two minutes left of discussion. And then we're going to break up into pairs and share one action step. What we're, each of us proposes that they're going to do in their daily life projects, we're also very small, that's what we'll talk about here today. So I'm trying to work, so anyone who can nominate, who's going to.
This has been a great discussion. We do have to nominate a spoke, someone who's going to report back to the larger group what happened here. We have about two minutes left of discussion happening. And then we're going to break up into pairs and share one action step. What we're, each of us proposes that they're going to do in their daily life projects. We're also very small, that's what we'll talk about here today. So I'm trying to work, so anyone who can nominate, who's interested in this, who wants a job, someone who can step back.
Is that kind of a quick response to that? Well, I can't say a lot what I think, and I'm going to agree on the, but I, I think that, that is what I would like to see is not put this focus on the city council to, I mean, they have to balance the budget and all this kind of stuff, but to have this discussion to really open it up so that we're in this together, making these decisions that are risky. But if we don't decide that, you know, we have a set of principles, that we're sticking to a goal that we want to get to, we are, if we don't envision where we want to go, we're never going to get there. And that's where we're involved, taking some risks, doing things in non-traditional ways. And it could be in fact using a set of jobs, but perhaps we create a new set of, often generating jobs. That, I don't, everyone might get, you're done wrong. That can work, because we gotta do this together, and it's huge.
Okay, so you've got like thirty seconds, thirty seconds, and then we're gonna do some video.
Five houses, three houses, and of course, few social activists who are willing to dedicate themselves.
I think those of us who are interested in the subject should first get together and find out what kind of economic development is actually going on because our missions and our.
We are not informed about what kind of economic development we are or have to. Where Cole Morgan is now, there were problems, and we don't really know what's been tried to access. One and number two, I just came back from. Development of worker collective, market businesses. Organizations who are going around trying to develop that. I'd like to look into, but I would first want to know what you're doing, charge for that. We're talking here, but we don't really know what to point, to find out what people are doing.
Into our next thing, we're gonna get to, to share one action step that you would take.
They have certain meetings there right now, sort of, you don't hear too much about it. You hear that the radio, free radio, free radio. I think it probably needs a lot of gears that nobody can afford to do, and that's the big problem with it.
It's a big space.
I understand that it is another transition back to.
After the committee sent over to the city, I was looking at the process again. I came to the senior center saying, I'm seeing this town, and you use me as a, even though the group I'm asking me to space for isn't necessarily, you know, and they would even give us a break, he's still on the, you know, the grant tag, plus, plus, plus the kitchen, so that was not great. Just, I would like to bring up a point, I heard some people talk about it, it was a city, I think, I think, I think, to the city, free space, free space. I'm creating somebody having to be a steward, you're beyond connecting.
Yeah, I'm thinking of these corporations to get a million dollars tax break a year. You submit, and they can come out all night with spaces, and that's all based on whether you're going to pay your rent or not. I mean, I just wonder, if you walk around there, it's tragic, it's monochromatic in, in a way. You know, everybody there is, when you say, they bring in the natives to bring in, how about diversity? They bring in a lot of diversity. Why don't you speak up because I should. Well, I, I need to, I mean, I don't have, I think you disagree with school, but, but, I have a granddaughter that this kind of work is done.
I would just like to say fairly succinctly, to encapsulate my, my feeling, which is that the big corporations that we've mentioned, and I would definitely add Walmart to that bundle, Coca-Cola, Cole Morgan, they are not our friends. That's my opinion, that's my feeling. And what I would, I would like to suggest, that as many of you here in this group, resonate more or less with that sentiment. Because that would give me the sense of all this group feeling. And I think that's part of the thrust of what Occupy is, is about. Yeah, I know that they look like they're doing good things, but I feel this in my gut. I don't know what they're doing, and yeah, I don't know, you should know how much water they do. They are not our friends.
I mean, the New York Times has that song, "The Magus Cafeteria," every day. Try to read about issues of what's going on on a national level and how these towns are.
But we just got away from one decision because I don't want to refer to W. All ears.
I was talking about funding, as far as, well, I was talking about the possibility of, of lasting permanent funding. An example of where, sustain as oil resources can, they forced the oil companies at the time, back in the seventies.
I think just they're not wrapping up this, but we have everybody.
Fund a special fund, they give dividends along.
We're gonna come back together in a large group. Great, we're just figuring out what we're gonna say. Great.
Right, and the institutionalization is about your point. They're precisely because it's not institutionalized, what is means we only talk to people we run into.
Well, if I may, the reason this is important is not because of city areas, it's not an institutionalization. This is actually a matter, but this, this meeting exists because the citizens, more specifically the Occupy North Hampton, invited it to happen. And I think that's a missing link, that the community to call for these sessions, will show up, will talk, and not do. Rather than have this decree or institutionalized, because the minute you do it, it's calcified, it's a bill. So we just, we want to.
That's a problem, yeah. But if you don't, it runs its favor.
Thank you all very much, and I hope that they see the damage. Emily, thank you, Max, thank you, yeah.
I guess the simple thing would be, I don't know how it ever gets away from us if it's this simple.
Got a tag?
Oh, yes. It was free?
Yes. Ted.
Sorry, I was gonna slide behind you. No, you're fine, you're fine, you're fine, you're fine.
If everybody, start rubbing your hands together if you can hear me. Rub your hands together, take my chair.
Maybe it's in my tent, but it makes it fun. Outwardly. They all support, all our, they all support.
Okay, so we're gonna silence the group, if everybody can just rub your hands together if you can hear me. And we're gonna try to clap together twice in unison. Do you think we can do it? So I'm gonna start the clap, and we'll see if we can clap together. So everybody, rub your hands together if you can hear me. Great, that sounds pretty good. All right. So now we're gonna get a chance to hear back from each group. So each spoke will have about three minutes to briefly sum up what you all talked about in your group. So who would like to start? And if you could say what group you were from.
Sure. We were the group for public space, I think it's public space.
What's your name?
My name is Daryl LeFleur. Want me to speak louder, more loudly?
Yes, yes.
We were the group for public space. And I drew the short straw, so I'm the one delivering our notes. There is interest in free or affordable meeting spaces, perhaps an effort toward creating a community center. Someone else suggested outdoor space, that would be available to move in for purposes of art, performing arts. Free space for free refurbishment space, I'm not sure what that means, but I didn't take the notes, but I'm putting it out there. Someone pointed out that, you know, there's privately owned space that is sitting empty. It's not being used, and of course, that's, you know, private property rights. Several members of the group experience is painful, or they said they've given up on finding space in the city for various uses. On the positive side, people pointed out some things that do work well, where people can take free yoga classes, or music, or use facilities in and around the city. There was a mention of the reliance on houses of worship or educational institutions. You know, needing the generosity of those partners in the city in order to gain space for, for use. There was, someone pointed out the dichotomy of our development of public spaces outdoors, like Fitzgerald's Lake or the Turkey Hill area, Mineral Hills, where we're trying to put in hiking trails. Anyone from the city or outside the city can come in and use these spaces if somebody gets hurt. But if someone comes into a school or a building, it's a little bit different. So there is a bit of a dichotomy between the built environment and the natural environment that had some improvements like boardwalks and such. Someone asked about how, how much would taxes have to be increased for a community space or a community center? Would that be exorbitant or affordable? That was just an issue, we didn't really address that as far as whether that would be practical or feasible. Regarding indoor space as a action issue, it was brought up that there are different rules for different spaces, different buildings, depending upon who has authority for those. So the senior center, it comes under the Council on Aging, or the director of the senior center. Plasky Park comes under the offices of the DPW. And there might be different rules and regulations and standards for the use of these different public spaces, and that it might be helpful to have something that was more coherent and cogent. Again, that would give you much more discussion than what we had today. Other issues. The money that we've spent on public facilities without creating a place for people to do things like dance, which I think was kind of covered earlier. Some of the buildings are not as accessible to get to. People pointed out that like using the Amherst Common is free, we don't have a city common per se.
Just another few seconds.
I think that wraps it up.
So the next spoke? Who'd like to go?
Our topic was, what's going, regards to economic development. Our topic involves what goes well and not so well with regards to economic development in the city of North Hampton. And pardon me if I didn't quite get some of the really great suggestions and ideas, there were quite a few. Um, I think connected to that are the CSA's, farmers markets and so on. Um, great, yeah, can't do my own writing, great, uh, great culture adding vitality to, to our environs. Uh, we've been recognized for many positive qualities nationally and otherwise. Um, really wonderful natural resources in general, geographic proximity to other really beautiful and vitally important areas. Uh, let's see. Uh, we have features of, of both rural and urban, very nice land balance. Uh, someone thought that, uh, there were indications that there were new levels of cooperation that extended beyond North Hampton specifically, but, you know, slightly beyond our borders with other groups. Uh, another mentioned that, uh, he or she thought that it was a benefit, the alliance between Cooley and MGH. And then, as far as the things that were spoken of that were not so positive, one was the lack of freely available public space. Um, that downtown businesses, in fact, do not provide, um, real needs for real people, more based on tourism, people with, you know, plenty of cash to spend, weekend shoppers, and that, uh, you know, some of the basics, the vital necessities, could only be had if you left Main Street. Um, thinking outside the box, uh, was referenced, and, uh, would hope that in the future, big local businesses might be asked to actively participate in providing local services such as transportation, alternative energy, such as, uh, developing river turbines, perhaps in conjunction with the, the wherewithal that a place like Cole Morgan has, has access to. Uh, so that we, as citizens of, of this city, actually, really put that out there as a real expectation with regards to what some of these big businesses and so-called taxpayers might provide back to the community. Um, one person spoke of this, generally, uh, spoke of this as really a culture of economic destruction, uh, one that's taking our wealth away. He referenced it, uh, with regards to a culture that, uh, basically implied a lack of, a lack of wealth of knowledge. Um, and there was a suggestion that wealth creation by sharing what we know with our, within our community, um, would be seen to be very important. Um, lastly, changing the currency, and I'm not sure what was implied by that overall. Um, another said, we consume goods from outside the community, we need to find the means to produce more of what we need. Uh, someone referenced the lost manufacturing base, uh, in general. Um, oh, and, um, there was a member of our group from the North Hampton City Council who, uh, basically spoke pretty stridently with regards to the fact that there are no funds for human services, police, fire, and so on. And yet, you know, there's a huge risk in pushing the larger companies to, uh, really give off more in terms of tax revenue. Um, citizen involvement, envision, envision where we want to go.
If you could wrap it up.
Yeah, I've got one, one left. Um, and then, the, the last, last really was, someone offered this, which I thought was really excellent, that we, we as a community can provide free housing and, and food stuff into a group of local activists to further the investigation and causes that we deemed worthy and important.
Group.
Louder, please.
Okay. Uh, a few of the things that we recognized as working well, um, were gay marriage in Massachusetts, Bill Newman's Civil Liberties Minute on WXOJ, um, as well as other community radio, um, programs that, um, demonstrated the availability of airtime for free speech. Um, also, um, one among us commended, or a couple among us commended, the, um, uh, behavior of the North Hampton Police during the Occupy demo, um, a ways back, that they helped, held up people's civil liberties. Um, also, the Civil Liberties and Public Policy Program at Hampshire College, and the annual conference that they put on, um, as a local resource regarding, um, civil liberties. Um, some of the things that we identified as not working well, oddly, this list is longer. Again, echoing some of the things that people have said already, are the problems that arise with the fact that North Hampton has very much become a destination community, a place that's attracted to tourists, um, and some of the things that come along with that. Brought up, uh, the anti-solicitation slash anti-panhandling ordinance that came up a couple of years ago, and the kinds of values that that indicates, um, upholding, being upheld by certain, um, groups' interests in the community. Um, also related, uh, the criminalization of homelessness, and the ways that some of the, um, treatment of homeless people, um, means that many people are forced to leave the, the area and escape. Um, also, the awareness of the fact that racial profiling does happen here in our local area, um, in schools and in the community and among police. Um, and then, thinking about on the national level, um, the National Defense Authorization Act, and, uh, the implications of that, and it was remarked that the city council, in fact, did pass a resolution to, um, request reconsideration of that, I think that's after, of that, um, or, of that, um, act. Um, kind of coming back to the, the very local, uh, the fact that there's little horrible housing, uh, in North Hampton, um, and that, in many ways, North Hampton, um, has shifted to be less class diverse, um, and, uh, related to that is the importance of remembering that North Hampton has shifted dramatically, um, over the last thirty to forty years in terms of class and, um, I suppose, um, other, uh, issues of diversity and the way that that, um, has impacted who is showing up at the table at meetings like this and other places where decisions are made, hopefully, and representing that conversation well. Um, and that the importance of going out and finding, uh, people who may have been in the area for a long time, but who have gotten shut out as the, the community has shifted towards some of those interests that I mentioned earlier. Um, also, um, mentioned was the surveillance of activists. Um, one among us had, um, an experience of surveillance that, um, was disturbing and obviously important when thinking about, um, resistance movements, local and beyond. Um, questions about homeland security money and what, uh, that means locally, what are the, um, requirements of how that money is used on the local scale, policing. Um, and also thinking about, uh, the local chickpea women's jail, and the fact that it's about to undergo an enormous expansion. Um, also, on a related note, the, the way that the money was channeled to the new police station in North Hampton, um, the free strikes law that is, um, in process right now, um, receiving a lot of criticism, have huge impacts in the state and in our region, um, and other kinds of criminal justice initiatives that beg the question of what our priorities are in terms of where our money goes and the implications of that, first, civil liberties locally, regionally, in the state, et cetera. Um, so I think that's about what our group. And also, basically, uh, you see from that that we were kind of just macking out the terrain, uh, tried to be somewhat concrete, but also kind of just identifying, uh, where we were with those things.
Right, who's left?
My name is Eli, and I was part of the, um, Corporate Accountability and Financing Group. Um, we, we kind of, we, uh, we had, most people agreed that, um, a lot of people in the group didn't like big corporations, kind of as a general starting point for, for this, but then, then also, people, um, want, whereas, you know, people need good jobs, and, uh, North Hampton needs to retain businesses who, um, are the places where jobs happen. Um, and then, our discussion centered around three, um, three different big corporations. Um, the issue of the police station financed by Morgan Stanley came up, um, and it was explained that the city, um, borrows money which is dealt with by a finance company, um, and, and so for the, for the city to get the best rate on that bond, um, so, so it spends the least amount of money, it went through the, the larger bank, uh, which was Morgan Stanley. So that was the, the rationale behind Morgan Stanley financing the police station. Um, there, there's the issue of needing good, good paying jobs and the, the issue of, of retaining corporations in town. Someone brought up tax incremental financing as the main economic development incentive, and constantly, in the corner there, welcomed other ideas for, um, incentivizing economic development, because that, that is going to be standard, standard practice. Um, there, there was concern that, that this idea of, of, um, short-term incentivizing jobs, um, ignored broader, long-term issues with, with corporations, with, with corporations who do bad things. Um, there was the issue of the Coke plant, I think it is, um, and, and that, um, there, the Coke effluent taxes the sewage treatment plant, um, which, which we didn't have an answer to or anything like that, but, but there was, um, people wanted transparency on the full costs of corporate presence in North Hampton. Um, yeah, there was, there was, um, people expressed the need to make businesses responsible, um, both, both for sticking around and, and for, like I said, not taxing the, the infrastructure. And someone was wondering about incentive, what incentives are in place for local business.
Uh, my name's Max, uh, and I was with the Civil Engagement Group, and I'm doing my best to support everyone as much as I can, except. Um, we, we did a review of, of the existing mechanisms of how we communicate with local government, um, just went through them, phone, email, fax. Um, there are public sessions held before meetings, uh, before council meetings, uh, before subcommittee meetings. Um, there are some of the, um, there's visioning meetings, um, some, um, contact is also, a lot of the contact is face-to-face on the streets with the local representatives, um, just kind of catching them and saying hello and saying a piece. Um, the website has information on when committees and commissions meet, and their contact information. Uh, we also reviewed some of the, kind of identified, like, closest access points to local government, and like, kind of like, groups that talk about issues that we're concerned about, um, and those included, uh, neighborhood community, neighborhood committee, committees, um, what we called area NGOs, um, affinity and special interest groups, the NEF was mentioned, NCTV, um, and so part of the question was how do we connect these groups? Um, and more importantly, how do we, uh, we identified that there may be a gap between these groups and communication to local government? Um, and is there a way to institutionalize this conversation, um, with government, with government? Um, some other things that were said were, uh, some of the questions, I guess, that were posed was how, how does the public help city government officials make progress on progressive issues? That it was perceived that we live in a fairly progressive area, and how do we help government officials not get bogged down in, um, governmental process like the street code? Um, one idea that was proposed was a, a national holiday for Election Day, as a, as a community building idea. Um, other things that were mentioned were, uh, I guess, kind of think of how the new North Hampton Twitter feed was a good thing, uh, for keeping up to date on happenings, especially canceled meetings. It was identified that having fun brings people out and gets them engaged. And that space is a big part of that, um, using that space for music and sports and arts and culture. Um, it was mentioned that transition, to be a transition town requires space to do that. Um, there was a, there was a, that there was an absence of people in, in our conversation, maybe even in the room, uh, people who are affected by a lot of the issues that we're discussing, um, even, you know, people of different politics, uh, cultures, races, religions, and how do we include them? Uh, there was, said there was a need to have a more, I guess, comprehensive analysis of our funding that includes, includes national as well as local perspective. Um, identified the elephant in the room is the military's funding. Um, and the last thing was that, uh, this meeting today, while we're here, was something that the community and the people organized, um, so, I guess it was kind of that and that.
Is there one more group?
I think that's it.
That's it?
Oh, great, we're right on time.
Excellent, so obviously, in forty-five minutes, we're not gonna solve all our problems. Um, and this is a conversation that we definitely hope that will continue, and I just wanna get a temperature check on how people felt about this meeting, and if you'd be willing to come out to another forum, and specifically, I'm really interested in talking about what we want. We talked a lot about what was working well, what are some of the problems. I think it's also really important to really articulate a vision of what we wanna see, especially in these areas. So if people could do, this means yes, great, I'd love to come back, this is like, it was kind of boring, people talk too much, whatever, this is like, I hated it, I'm never coming back. So, um, we'll do a temperature check on how this went for people. Okay, so not too many people.
If you have a microphone.
Microphone, thank you, Francis. Great, so we just have ten more minutes, we wanna get a couple announcements of upcoming events, people that have announcements. Wednesday night, there's something?
Wednesday, at the Media Education Foundation, seven o'clock, David Cobb of Move to Amend is gonna be speaking. Uh, he's one of, uh, he's a national spokesperson for, um, some of the national organizing that's going around to amend the Constitution to declare that, to overturn Citizens United, uh, saying that corporations are not people and money is not speech. So he's gonna be kind of talking about ways that our local communities, in what they're tasked, can kind of engage in some of that organizing that's happening across the country.
When is that again?
Uh, Wednesday, at seven o'clock, at the Media Education Foundation. The phrase is pro-community, so, sorry.
And then on Thursday, does anybody wanna talk about the energy? Anybody from that group? The Brattleboro.
Oh, sure, Thursday, it's the day after the Vernon-Hervon nuclear power plant is supposed to be closed down, but it's not going to unless we do it. So there's a big demonstration, uh, beginning at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, rally at the Commons in Brattleboro, and a march up to the gate, it's a three-mile walk, and if this summer weather continues, just bring your sunscreen. Um, we really need it, it's the anti-nuclear... The anti-nuclear work started here, when we began organizing against Seabrook. It stopped nuclear power plants for twenty-plus years, it's time to do it again. So put on your walking shoes and join us Thursday at, in Brattleboro.
How key has power pooling been arranged from Northampton?
We will talk, we can talk about that online, on the Occupy Northampton website, thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One is Elliot Tarry, who has worked with the planners of this, did some great research and has written a wonderful paper called Swimming with Sharks. Northampton City Council sells out to the lowest bidder, not to end on a negative note, but it really is full of information. And I have ten copies here that I'll share, and also, it's linked on our website, which is OccupyNorthampton.org. And the other thing is that I have one for everybody, a list flyer that's in English and Spanish, and it's from Arise for Social Justice in Springfield, and it's telling all of us about a wonderful event coming up. I'll just read the first part. End the criminalization of homelessness and poverty. Join us, Monday, April 2nd, in solidarity with the National Day of Action for the Right to Exist, and this is in Court Square in Springfield. It's gathering at noon on April 2nd, and music at twelve-thirty and speakers, and then marching to the governor's office. So I have plenty of these, and please pick one up on your way out.
Any other announcements?
I don't know the dates off the top of my head, but the Prison Birth Project, a local reproductive justice organization, is having two house parties, one in Florence and one in Boston, in the next month, and you can visit theprisonbirthproject.org to find out more about those and about the organization. Those house parties are a great place to get more information, to get involved, to donate. So theprisonbirthproject.org.
There is announcement back here?
Yeah, I got, I got a few different events. Also, on the twenty-second, is the kickoff of the PVTA's hearings regarding some fare hikes and route changes, the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority, so that one will be in Holyoke from five to seven PM. There will be one in Northampton, it's, I'm forgetting off the top of my head, but it's over a two-week span. I think the, if you go to pvta.org, you can find out, these public meetings, we're going to be talking about changes to public transit in the Pioneer Valley. The other thing I wanted to mention was on April 1st, the Green Rainbow Party will be having its Pioneer Valley Annual Convention at UMass Amherst in the campus center, room 101. So we just invite anyone to come, we'd like to talk about sustainability and economic justice and, you know, ways of really concretely doing stuff in our communities. And then last but not least, April fourteenth is the Jobs with Justice Annual Conference in Holyoke, and that will be great too. So just look up WMJWJ.org for more on that.
Great. Other announcements?
Northampton City Council meets first and third Thursday of the month, Public Comment Event VII. That was mine.
Any other announcements?
I just thought it might be important, people forget about the war and things like that. Today's the anniversary of the invasion of Iraq, I don't know if anyone knew that, but maybe a moment of silence would be good. March nineteenth, two thousand and three, we're still there, I don't really see an end, maybe a moment of silence for that, I think would be appropriate, seeing as this is a community meeting.
Mass Development is having a meeting for Village.
We're going to take that one for silence for the panel for first.
Thank you.
Just quick, Mass Development is having a meeting for Village Hospital Hill, if anyone wants to know about it, they can talk to me or try and find out about it.
All right, we have, I just want to announce that the Western, the Occupy Northampton General Assembly meets every single Saturday at the Media Education Foundation Community Room, and the meetings are at four o'clock, four to six.
There's one more. And we're starting to meet outside in those two days.
Yes, we're going to be meeting at Plasky Park again, starting in eight, nine, ten.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Well, thanks, everybody, for coming out. Great work. We'll do it, we'll do it again, for sure. So these are, these days again, we've got some raffle items. This is donated from Equal Exchange, a local business, here's fair trade coffee and chocolate.
We'll do three.
Yeah.
Okay, great, so here.
Okay, the first, Sue, Sue Nortal. Sue's still here. Sue Nord.
Sue Nord.
Okay. Woo-hoo! David? Okay.
Nice. Chocolate, chocolate. And please, just for the last one, I'd just like to say, thank you to the city council, particularly Bill Dwight, for meeting the onrush, perhaps not well orchestrated entree of Occupy Northampton to result in this fine meeting. It's very appreciated, and I think that it shows what we can do when we have this kind of city government and we can work together.
Rich. Rich, I'm trying to check.